And she's going, "Well, I know it's small," and I'm going, "Psch."
I thought I was the only one because nobody ever says anything.
No, I say something to him all the time about it. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the committee of a whole for November 4th. If the clerk could please read the rule.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor. Councilmember Washington. Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Garza.
Councilmember Dunbar has called in and asked for an excused absence. So with that, Vice President Spatafor, we have the minutes for October 28th.
Madam President, I move the minutes of October 28th, 2019.
All right, we have a motion on the minutes. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. This is an opportunity for public comment. At this time, if you would like to make a public comment, please come to the podium, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes. Is there anyone out there that would like to make a public comment at this time? Going, going, gone. All right, what we're going to do is we're going to move the resolution to appoint for the Third Ward, Mr. Leek, forward, and then we will do our presentation by the internal auditor. So with that, Mr. Leek, if you could please come to the table. The microphone in front of you, if you'd make sure that the green light is on. It's down at the... You can pull it closer to you if you need to. And then there's a button there, and a bright green light will come on for you, okay?
Okay.
All right, you've got it. We have a recommendation from the mayor's office to appoint Mr. Leek to the BWL Commission Third Ward member. This would replace Mr. Graves, who has had to resign due to some health issues. With that, we have in front of us the application for the Board of Water and Light. And, Mr. Leek, if you could talk to us and give us some, a little bit of information about yourself and why you want to serve on the board, and then we'll open it up for council questions. Mr. Leek.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Council President, City Council Members. My name is DeShawn Leek. I'm 45. I'm a lifelong resident. I went to Everett High School.
Well, we'll forgive you for that one, so.
Okay. I attended Lansing Community College. I went there for construction management, and it just so happened I was given the opportunity to get into a five-year apprenticeship for local 333 Plumbers and Pipe Fitters. And I'm now a 20-year member. Since being there, I've been a steward for seven years. I'm currently serving on the executive board. And I just resigned from the Lansing City Plumbing Board of Appeals to apply for this position right here.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And if you could give us a little information about why you think that you'd be a good fit for the Board of Commissioners, we'd like to hear that, too.
Well, I just feel that I'd be a good steward for the community, you know, the employees, and just the whole board itself, if that's...
This is an opportunity for council questions. Do we have any questions for Mr. Leek at this time? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Madam President. So I appreciate you for willing to be volunteering your time to serve on a board, especially an important one like Lansing Board Water and Light. So we were able to speak earlier, and I'm sorry that I didn't call you sooner or talk to you, you know, other than quickly before council, but I definitely appreciate you. I think you bring a lot of positives just from our conversation and knowing your background, being local from Everett, you know, a Lansing person. This is a Lansing board. It's a community board, basically, utility. So that's great that you're from here. Your family's here also, your kids?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so young people, that's great. And I think, you know, you being in the... A local plumber also is a good thing that you work here. You volunteer at Sparrow for the Children's Network.
Yes, sir.
So that tells me you care about young people and their future and their health, and just health in general. And as a former athlete, I imagine you do as well. So I also appreciate that in our conversation that you said that you agree that there is climate change and that you agree with going green. So I guess the question is, I mean, what do you mean by agree with going green?
Well, I believe in clean energy, so I'm all for, you know, going green. You know, like, I guess I would say the Board of Water and Light doing the natural gas, I think it's a positive step towards going green. You know, I don't know that they're there yet with the technology and affordability, but I think it's a step in the right direction to get to that point.
Thank you. Also, so I guess being in a local union and there's being like union positions at Board Water and Light, but you also being a commissioner, do you think that presents any conflict of interest?
Uh, no, I don't.
And also, so those are a lot of positives you bring. Some of the concerns that I have is just, first, that the administration, no, I'm not trying to knock or anything, but they didn't come to any of us, including myself, who's voiced strong opinions about like the board makeup and also the qualifications. And I also do understand and appreciate that it's hard to fill some of these boards, and really, there's vacancy. So I understand that as well. And that this particular one is the Third Ward one. I'm not sure if Mr. Hussein has been contacted for a Third Ward position on the board, but that's just one knock already that you had no control over. Also, in our conversation, I learned that you have not... You're not aware of the International Panel on Climate Change 1.5 report?
No, I haven't read it.
And that's fine. But basically, it's the... And we explained a little bit, but all the top scientists in the world came together and said that our carbon emissions and footprint on this current path is going to exceed 1.5 degrees, two degrees warming, which is going to send us into a tipping point, chaos. All these different things are bad are going to happen, and that we have to make immediate changes soon in order to keep it from going there.
Yes. I would be more than into, you know, I would like to read it, you know? And I would like to commend the Board of Water and Light for decommissioning, you know, the coal plants, too. It's a step in the right direction.
It is. It is a step in the right direction. But the one misconception is that natural gas is a clean energy. And given the whole process to get it to electricity, not so much the burning part, but the whole process, it's really also bad. But that's good. So my last thing is, that's a good thing, is that you're willing to read that report. But then there's another concern I have. So all that aside, then I go into like your education, training, and experience is just not in that sector of either energy or what a lot of the council's more concerned about, clean energy and transforming to it. So that's a knock because it's ultimately the Board of Commissioners who make these important decisions. So without people that have like training or experience in those, it's just hard for me to support that.
Yes.
And, you know, so another great positive is you're a really great guy, it sounds like. And that's a good thing. But as far as my support, it's just hard for me to support just based on the... Just your background and everything when it comes to some of the decisions that need to be made.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Hussein.
First of all, we appreciate you being vetted this way. I was in your position in 2010 when I was being vetted for the part where not everybody has to come down here in the well. And it's nerve-wracking when you're looking up at the dais and you're looking at individuals and the lights around you and you're on TV. Most appointments get vetted in committee, which, you know, behind these walls in conference room, and so we appreciate you going through this process. The appointment was vetted past me. And I had an opportunity to not only talk to DeShawn, but to also talk to people that knew you. And people spoke to the fact that you are a, not only a great individual, but when it comes to some of the charges that you'll be tasked with on this board, that you're a student of the issues, and so I appreciate that. When we talked, you know, we talked a lot about greener energy. We talked a lot about environmental sustainability. We talked a lot about the board's role in that. And so we talked about the 30%, you know, by 2020, and the 40% by 2030. We talked about the retiring of the coal plants by 2025. We talked about some of the deficiencies, if you remember, in technology when it comes to backup storage and things of that nature, as well as NIMBYism, and the list went on. And when I asked you the questions, what I appreciated was you said, "Look, I don't have the answers to all the questions now." But what I am absolutely committed to is to studying the issues, to being a tenant, to participating in community dialogue. We talked a lot about neighborhood association meetings and constituent contact meetings. And so I really appreciated your willingness. It was a really, really good conversation. So I am comfortable with this appointment because I truly do believe that you will be present, that you will be prepared, and that you're humble enough to say, "You know, I don't know. I need to do some research." And I think you'll do that. So I really appreciate you being here, and I will be supporting your appointment. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for being here. I appreciate it. You know, as we... I think all of us up here recognize that there is a climate change issue, and climate change is present, and it's real, and we need to do something about it immediately. One of the things that I've often and continue to say is, you know, we need to push the board a little bit more, to do more, to address climate change. They're the biggest polluter here in the city of Lansing, and so they should be doing more. Having said that, you know, what I need from you is a commitment to, you know, learn all you can and be a responsive commissioner, to do your homework and to come to the meetings prepared. And that does mean to, you know, come up to speed on some of the issues that are facing us, like climate change, and hold the board to their commitments to... For their green energy standards and for their... And to look at alternatives. And so, you know, I'm asking you, are you prepared to do the homework that needs to be done to come up to speed and to be able to provide guidance and respond to the board regarding climate change issues?
Yes, ma'am, Councilmember.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Leek, thank you for being here. I'm comfortable the mayor's vetted you, the ward member has vetted you. And there's an awful lot of talk about the clean energy, which is important. You know, we have to take care of our environment. I get it. The Board of Water and Light, I actually initiated the resolution a few years ago that asked for 20% renewable by 2020, and we're going to get 30%. So we... They are ahead of what we requested, and I'm very happy with that. And as the technology becomes available, and we all know that there's some problems with storing this energy, and we have to also be very cognizant of the cost. We have some folks that cannot pay top dollar. It's as a public utility. I hope that along with this one issue, which is huge, that we also remember the folks that have to pay for utilities and energy, and that we keep those folks in mind, that we keep our energy affordable, and that whatever we can do to keep it affordable and keep it clean and go forward in the process is also on your mind.
Yes, I totally agree.
Are there other councilmember comments? Councilmember Spatafor, Vice President Spatafor.
I just wanted to thank you for your willingness to serve. I know it's a challenge sometimes to find folks that are interested in stepping up and serving their community in roles that take a lot more of your time than you probably expect and do not pay and types of things. So I really appreciate your willingness to roll up your sleeves and try to serve our community. So thank you for being here tonight and have a good one.
Other... Councilmember Jackson.
So just really quickly to explain my no vote. It's no with a hope that you prove me wrong in the future. And it's only just because of what I said earlier. But nothing personal. I know that we're going to be good, and I can't wait to see you in the biannual meetings. I'm going to ask just basic questions like, what's... Anybody learn anything? Any updates? How's our 20 by 20 coming? I heard that our wind farm that you counted on didn't make it, so what's the next step? So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other councilmember comments? Sir, I have a few questions for you. One question that I ask every potential commissioner that comes before us. Would you support selling the Board of Water and Light?
No, I would not, Council President.
Apparently, you've had a conversation with Councilmember Hussein about getting out to neighborhood meetings as a commissioner representing the Third Ward. I encourage you to make sure that you are communicating with people in the Third Ward, getting their opinions, talking to them about things that are coming up at the board. There are constituent meetings, neighborhood meetings that you can go to. And I realize the heavy load, especially with the family, the fact that you're taking this on and all the meetings that you'll be involved in with that. But it is important that the commissioners do have a face out there in the community. So I encourage you to make sure that you do that as well. A question that I was asked at the Colonial Village Neighborhood Meeting and asked to talk to any potential commissioner for the Third Ward had to do with the tree removal, where there was trees that were cut by Wright Tree Service, which was part of the power line issue. There were a number of trees that were taken down to the stumps, and this was a neighborhood that tried to come up with some solutions to be able to have those tree stumps removed. And so my question to you is, if you were appointed, would you be willing to go back to the board and try to see if there were ways that you could facilitate helping to make that happen in the future?
Yes, I would.
Okay. The other thing that I think is extremely important with this is your willingness to learn. I, you know, we're... I don't know of a person sitting up here on this dais that knew exactly what council was when they were sworn into office. I think they had ideas of what they thought it was, but to truly understand what it was took time, sitting in that seat and learning and studying and being part of that. So I appreciate the fact that you're willing to learn, to study, and to take that information back. And understanding that you are representing the people of the Third Ward when it comes to climate energy, when we're talking about green energy, when we're talking about rates, when we're talking about tree removal, all of those things have an impact on that. And your vote isn't just for the Third Ward, it's for the entire city. So I want to thank you for being willing to step up and do this. And I believe that you will be a commissioner that, again, does have the heart of the people, and we do appreciate that.
Thank you.
So with that, Vice President Spatafor.
I'd actually yield to Mr. Hussein if he'd like to make the motion.
Councilmember Hussein, would you like to move?
I would move the appointment of DeShawn to the Board of Water and Light, Board of Commissioners, as a Third Ward member.
We have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye, pose. Mr. Leek, on November 18th, we'll have this before the entire council. If you'd like to come down that night at 7:00, we can move it up on the agenda and have you sworn in if you'd like to be there. If you're not able to be here on Monday, the 18th, the next day, you can go to the clerk's office and be sworn in. There's also a series, and I see Jim Dravenstadt in the audience. There is a series of BWL informational forums that they're having on their integrated energy system. And I would encourage you to... I know they've shown them in the newspaper and online and some other things. Even if there are meetings before you're sworn in, that you might go and listen to what some of the public has to say on those.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
So we want to thank you for coming.
Thank you, councilmembers.
You're welcome. Okay. With that, we are going back to the presentation by the internal auditor. I had a number of councilmembers when we received the information that Lansing Soccer Club, Lansing Ignite, was going to be closing. And this was going to be the end of them being at the Lugnut Stadium, that there were questions about the money that we had appropriated for this, what funds were still outstanding. We had questions from councilmembers and the public. So I asked the internal auditor to put together a presentation based on the contract and the information. And so at this time, I will turn it over to the internal auditor. If you have questions while he's going through the presentation, please get my attention, and we will call on you, and so that you can ask your questions. This PowerPoint is also going to be on the screen. And for those that are sitting in the audience, there are copies of the PowerPoint back on the table. And, Mr. Brewer, this is your time.
Thank you for your time on this matter. Thank you for the council for giving me the time to present this material. Again, Carol did a pretty good job of providing the information or the background for it. First, I want to say this is secondhand information. What I did is, when it was requested of me, I inquired from Lepfa staff and then this... The administration staff. In addition, I checked the financial system to confirm some of the statements that were made. And also, I cross-referenced the contract to see the key points because obviously, the contract, it was 50 pages. So I wanted concise that, in other words, where the high points are. And so this... The presentation you should have is a uniquely sized presentation in front of you. And first, I'll set off as the scope of it was to basically cover the paid and outstanding payments from stadium soccer lease agreement, per information provided between the city of Lansing and the Lansing Soccer Club in relations with activities revolving around Lansing Ignite Year One. In the analysis of the contract, it comes to where there was four key components that I derived into. One is the one-time sod expenditure, sod equipment not to exceed $150,000. The annual expense for marketing to Lansing Soccer Club, $125,000, offset by the annual soccer service credit.
There. Okay, you're right there. One time... Or back one.
There.
There. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hard to turn your neck and look at that.
Yeah.
Lot easier up there. The third one is the annual reimbursement of sod conversion to 15 to Lansing Soccer Club not to exceed $36,000 annually. The fourth item is the utility expenses in regard to home soccer club... Soccer games through which the city of Lansing agreed to pay the first $20,000 and split 50-50 between the Lansing Soccer Club and city thereafter. The soccer equipment was confirmed to be already had been made by Lepfa staff. The invoice was provided by Lepfa staff that indicated $157,500 for invoice to a unspecified vendor because it was indicated as... We couldn't disclose the particular vendor, obviously, for competitive reasons. The invoice was breakdown where $100,000 was donated to Lepfa by the CBB Team Lansing Foundation. In addition, it was partially funded by $50,000 from the city of Lansing that was invoiced on 1/31/2019 by Lepfa. It was confirmed by Lepfa staff. I cross-referenced the financial system. I did not make any... Find any payments of this. So I reached out to the administrative staff, and then I also reached out to Lepfa staff again, and they confirmed that the $50,000 had not been paid. And also, the remaining $7,500 was paid by Lepfa funds. I did confirm that that has been paid. So the only remaining outstanding is the $50,000.
Yeah, I'm going to stop you right there.
No problem.
Vice President Spatafor. Okay. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. So the partial funds, the $50,000 that was invoiced, this invoice hasn't been paid. Because they're not, I guess it's a legal question, because there are no more, are we still on the hook to pay that $50,000?
Right now, we're in the middle of negotiation on the settlement of this contract, so I'd rather not come if you don't want to.
Okay, thank you.
Is that going to be your general response if we ask contract questions? I just need to know ahead of time.
Yes.
Okay.
And I will specify, the 50... The payment, the vent... The equipment's already been purchased. So technically, the vendor is the one that we're reimbursing Lepfa. And then Lepfa's already made the purchase, so they have outstanding balance of $50,000, obviously, that they're getting from the city of Lansing. So like I said, that's a little bit different than the marketing payment.
And Eric, before you move on, the one question I would like you to take back to Lepfa, and that is, because we're not going to need the sod conversion equipment, are they going... Since it's less than a year old, are they going to try to resell it? And will that recoup the $50,000 that's owed by the city?
In the board meeting, which I am required to attend, they did discuss in very vague details about possibly using the equipment for other activities or possibly integrating some equipment. Some of the equipment that was purchased were two tractors or a large tractor. I have to look back to his voice, but there has been discussion, but I will get more specifics on that.
All right, thank you.
The next is the annual expense of marketing the Lansing Soccer Club for $125,000, offset by the annual soccer service credit. Again, I looked at the financial system to see if there was any payment that was made to the Lansing Soccer Club, and there was not. So what I did is I reached out to administrative staff and Lepfa staff to see if that payment had been made. And then in addition, I cross-referenced the contract to see when the actual timing of the payment or reference of material, to see if there's any term agreements. That's when I noticed that, obviously, I didn't find any payment being made because as the contract states, the marketing payment annual soccer service credit shall be reconciled in December each calendar year with the resulting payment made by December 15th of that year. In addition, it was noted this... There is not expected to be any annual soccer service credit in year one because the average annual number of tickets sold was below 4,500. And that was backed up by additional information that were provided to me by Lepfa staff of the premium breakdown.
Could you explain the annual soccer service credit to us, please?
Basically, what it was is you get a 6% reduction of any tickets over... Of the revenue over 4,500 of the average premium tickets sold of... For the Lansing Lugnuts. Let me confirm that that's a... I'm going off of memory. I want to make sure that that's correct. LSC will pay the city 6% of the ticket price per ticket as established from time to time, or $2 per ticket. What... Okay, wait. That's actually... Nevermind. Wrong section.
That's okay.
Let me circle back around to that because I can't find... Had everything marked off? And that was the one question that I didn't have marked off.
Okay. Councilmember Hussein.
Just a quick... Just a quick question in terms of the $125,000 expense for marketing. This was, I'm trying to go back in my memory. This was so that they would market the stadium, correct, as a venue for other activities? Other... Is that correct? And were there any deliverables? I mean, do we have any information pertaining to how they marketed the stadium and what they were able to bring in? Or am I completely missing the market? Maybe I am.
The... There was the marketing payment was a payment for the team to market the stadium as a whole. You are correct. That was the $125,000. Then there was this service credit, which I believe equated to 5% of the gross ticket sales above 4,500. And that would offset the 125. That's what Eric is referring to. Lepfa would have that information as to... I don't personally have it as to how much marketing was done. We're in the process of... We're in the process of looking all out right now.
Vice President Spatafor.
I think Mr. Smucker just answered my question, but maybe Samantha, Deputy Mayor Harkins, could you help answer this more clearly? Will there be some sort of demonstrable receipt? Or some sort of marketing plan or something that they show to us that shows $125,000 worth of marketing for the venue and the city? Because I know it was, it was more broad. It was like Lansing, the venue, all that jazz, but will they be able to demonstrate that that was, that end of the bargain was fulfilled?
We can talk to them about that. We did not include in the contract any sort of requirement of deliverables, but certainly, I know we had a number of events last year that in the stadium we hadn't had before. We're looking to do some things again in this new year. So I think that we could certainly look at that and put that together, but it was not as deliverable as part of the contract.
Okay. I just, there was, in my mind, there was a leap of faith on that, which I was fine to give in for five years, but with a less than one year turnaround, I guess I'd like to see a little bit more of the paperwork. I'm not saying that it was misspent or wasn't spent, but if there's a way to demonstrate that marketing value to the city.
Mr. Brewer.
I found the material that referenced, the marketing payment shall be reduced by the amount of equal to 5%. I said 6%, so I misspoke, of the gross ticket revenue for all tickets above 4,500. Obviously, the average ticket sale was not over 4,500, so therefore, there was no credit. So like I said, is it the $125,000 payment based on the obligations is technically an obligation by the city.
Okay.
I might just add that under the contract, I mean, this is not going to occur now, but after five years, that marketing payment was to cease completely.
But yeah, but my, my two cents in it is that why are we paying $125,000 for something that's now gone away and we're not gonna receive anything from it? So that's my two cents. Vice President Spatafor.
Well, my, and I think my question is too, it's a retroactive payment, is that correct?
Yeah.
They did it then, okay, this one, if it is a future payment, I would have a strong objection to paying it. Makes sense.
Mr. Brewer.
Next, the annual reimbursement for SOD conversions to the Lansing Soccer Club not to exceed $36,000. Lepfa has received invoices of totally $28,819 from LSC for turf conversions as of the review date. There might not be any further invoices as baseball season had already ended as the last invoice, 9/11/2019. The city has reimbursed Lepfa the $21,544. The two outstanding invoices the city of Lansing has paid totals $7,265.
Okay.
The utilities expenses in regards to the home soccer games in which the city agreed to pay the first $20,000 and the split 50-50 between the Lansing Soccer Club and the city thereafter, utilities expense are passed through expenses for Lepfa and management of Cooley Law School Stadium for the city of Lansing. Information provided Lepfa staff on 10/22/2019 for utility expense in regards to Lansing Ignite home games for 4/13/2019 to 10/5/2019 by Lepfa staff was $18,044. Now, all invoices have been received from October until the first week of November, and there is a possibility that Lepfa may invoice Lansing Soccer Club for the proportion of the final bill if over the $20,000 amount.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. So, and I think I had asked this question when we were first looking at this. I mean, how do you, how are they distinguishing between utilities that were paid for the Lansing Lugnuts, for utilities that were paid for Lansing Ignite? How, how is that working? And how do we know that part of this $18,000 isn't part for utilities for Lansing Lugnuts?
It was expressed to me that they installed the smart meters. In addition, they provided the work break, a worksheet that did the breakout, and they're pro, prorating it based on expenditures. So it's not a clean cut. They have to do some estimations on there, but all the background was provided. I didn't go into specifics about how they're actually calculating it, but I can reach out to Lepfa staff for that if you want me to. Can you bring up the slide? Other information for consideration, this was not the primary focus, but I wanted to point this out. The premium ticket revenue, the amount due to the city of Lansing is $3,861.70 for the months of April to September with monthly average of 643. This amount is minimum related compared to the expenses that occurred in year one. Thus, I didn't really feel considered to offset that amount because it was obviously the material amount of that. In addition, the capital improvements to the stadium TMO soccer agreement, as stated in the TMO agreement for years 2018 to 2021, had a CIP allocation of $50,000 per year minimum to $75,000 per year maximum. The soccer agreement, years 2018 to 2021, had the CIP allocated of $70,000, $75,000 per fiscal year, and as stated in the agreement enumerated to the TMO agreement and not to be as a separate item, thus in effect, increasing the maximum amount spent by the CIP per year. This expense would have occurred without the soccer agreement by means of the TMO agreement at the minimum amount of $50,000 per year. Consequently, it is believed that the increased amount of $75,000 would revert back to the TMO agreement language because the soccer agreement would no longer be in effect upon termination by one or both parties. In the last slide, it shows you the breakdown of what's paid and outstanding. And obviously, that $7,500 for Lepfa, for the SOD equipment, would be actually paid. And I'd, like I said, is I've been informed with Lepfa staff that it's actually been paid. So if you look at, it shows you the city's payments, Lepfa's payments, and the CBB. And it basically shows you the four items of 157,500 for the SOD equipment, the marketing expense of $125,000, the SOD conversions for the total of $28,819, which 7,265 has not been reimbursed by the city of Lansing. And the utility expense breakdown that was provided. In addition, I estimated a 1,061. That was, there were 17 games that were invoiced for the average of 1,061, which is obviously the 18,044 divided by 17 to get the estimated amount. Do you have any questions about the information that was provided?
Vice President Spatafor.
Excuse me, thanks, Madam President. Eric, going down to the totals by entity number, city of Lansing, 203,819. Is that inclusive of the outstanding invoice on the SOD equipment?
Yes, it is. If you look at the total, the total by entity, there's $50,000 outstanding on the top line. There's $125,000 outstanding for the marketing equipment or the marketing expense. There's 7,265 outstanding of the SOD conversion, and the amount paid was $21,554 that was confirmed by the reconciliation of the financial system.
And you also said that these numbers do not reflect the $3,800 in ticket revenue?
Yes, that is not offset. So technically, that two.
Just under $200,000 then?
Yep.
All right.
You are absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Yes, councilmember Spitzley. Oh. Other questions? Councilmember Jackson.
Well, Adam answered my question, but my question was gonna be out of the breakdown for a simple person like myself, which one is the Lansing Soccer Club? But it's the CBB total that's $100,000, correct?
That is correct.
And so those are known expenses. Does that include, I guess you went over what it includes, but does that have any? Do we know any of their other expenses? We already know there was $300,000 on salaries. Do we know other things or that's not important?
This is specific to the LSC expenses. Is that the question?
I guess.
No, what I did is I looked, I was directed to look at the contract and the expenditures dealing specifically with the entities, Lepfa, and obviously, the city of Lansing. I did not ask for any additional information from the Lansing Soccer Club. But what I would do is I'd probably reach out to Lepfa staff and then inquire through Lepfa staff or have a dual meeting with Lepfa staff and me to discuss some of the expenditures because obviously, they're not going to disclose certain information. And it's a, obviously, with the, the contract, with ceasing operations, there, it's going to be a process that's going to be happening for settlement or possible payments. So this, thus, the payments outstanding wanted to be determined, thus, this review was done.
Other questions? We understand that legal is, is looking at this. You know, I, my concern is, we realize the contract was a five-year contract and that there were certain things that, that we felt that we would receive because of that. Now, with it closing after a year, I'm hoping that the city, and I direct this to the administration, will definitely be looking at a positive way of dealing with this for the taxpayers. The idea that the potential of $200,000 as part of that, when there are a number of other issues out there, I, I would hope that as we move forward with this, that we're looking at that. I've got councilmember Hussein, then councilmember Jackson.
Just very quickly, I just wanted to agree with that, and I hope that we negotiate with all the vigor within you. When I, when I look at the, the different expenses, I don't necessarily have a huge issue with the SOD conversions or the utility. It's not, it wasn't even a cost share because we didn't get to the 20,000 threshold, but you know, those are for services rendered, for energy consumed, et cetera. But I'm really struggling with the equipment that we now own, that we have no use for. I just can't imagine what we could possibly use that for. And I'm really struggling with the, the $125,000 in, in marketing payments. And you know, I think, you know, Peter stated it pretty clearly, I, you know, I feel like we need something, some evidence that demonstrates that they actually did something to market that stadium and to bring, you know, renewed life to it. So we really appreciate the work ahead that the city attorney's office is going to pursue.
Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I kind of feel like this might be our last time talking about it, at least publicly. So I do want to just say a few things. One is I completely supported the idea of pro soccer in Lansing when I first heard about it. I was very excited. I even tried out for the team. I went to most of the home games. I brought my children. They played on the bounce, well, the daughter played on the bouncy place. I got to look over the outfield and watch the game, and son was mostly asleep. So it worked out great. It was a great team. The players were good. You saw from, if anybody watched the game, how good they actually were. And I ultimately thought, you know, if you don't shoot, you can't score. So let's get, let's, let's put a pro team here. I supported it. But a few things that were interesting now looking back at it, like, well, then how could I have believed that we were gonna get 4,000 people per game? And it's one, because we brought up the question, like, some of the MLS, which is the highest level, don't average 4,000. So they had a presentation on it. And the presentation was like, we got the plan, here's the tickets, here's the regional draw, it's not just gonna be Lansing people, but it's gonna also be people from St. John's that are gonna come in. There's a huge youth soccer movement going on. That's how we're gonna get it. And I, I went for it, but looking back, I think that was the mistake that we made is, is basically thinking they're gonna have 400,000 people because it takes the 400 and 4,500 plus to get our extra money back, and that's even higher than that standard that ultimately was about half of that or a little less. So, so that was, I think, the mistake. But again, at the time, everybody can look back and say it now, but at the time, we supported it, and I was very excited. So one more thing, we did ask about the league and the chances of a one-and-done, and it was kind of just reassured that that wouldn't happen because there was like five-year, what if after a few years, you know, the league folds or the team folds or something? They're like, oh, that won't happen. But then the contract's just over from that point on, and whatever happened, happened. So we got the earliest of all those options.
Vice President Spatafor.
I just wanted to echo some of the sentiments. I really appreciate Mr. Hussein speaking to the, let's see if we can get the best deal for the taxpayers. And I wanted to highlight something councilmember Jackson said as well, is I, I'm happy, you know, this came out of council unanimously. We had a big, you know, big celebration, big support. I am happy to live in a community where we, we do still take the shots and we still try on, we try big things. And I, I hope this doesn't scare us away from trying big things. We still had 2,800 people downtown, shopping, going to restaurants, supporting businesses, 15 times more than we did last year. And I think that's something to at least hang our hat on a little bit. We tried something new. It didn't work out. That doesn't mean you should stop trying to get our money situation handled, but I'm, I'm proud of us. I think, you know, we failed, but you can't fail if you don't try, and we did try. And I appreciate that.
Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I want to echo what my colleague has just said. I was having a conversation with a woman, and she was like, oh, yeah, and then the soccer. And it was like, you know what? Not everything we do is going to succeed, but does that mean we do nothing because it might not succeed? I was very excited. This one didn't work out, but I'm with Mr. Spatafor. I hope, there you go, hockey. So I, I think we move forward. I have all the confidence in the world of our legal team and the administration that they will do the best they can through these negotiating, the negotiating of this final effort. And you know what? We're not gonna succeed at everything, but we gave it a try.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move on. Thank you, Mr. Brewer. And we thank you, very good explanation of the situation and so that both the public and council can understand it. We are to resolution for reappointments. Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I would move the resolution for reappointments. They are Mitch Rice for the Board of Zoning Appeals as an at-large member with a term expiring on 6/30/2022. Carol Skillings for the Historic District Commission as an at-large member, term expiring 6/30/2022. And Cynthia Bowen for Lepfa as an at-large member, term expiring 6/30/2022. And note that in 2022, we'll have some more appointments to make.
Okay. With that, are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. The next item that we have are the Human Rights Ordinance rules and guidelines for processing investigations. And Heather is going to take us through this. So with that, they are in your packet. It's the purplish tab. And we will turn it over to Heather.
So the human rights.
Your mic isn't on. Okay, thank you.
The Human Rights Ordinance specified that the office of the city attorney was to promulgate rules and guidelines for processing, investigating, mediating, conciliating, and recommending resolution of complaints. And that is exactly what you have before you. As you are probably aware, the Human Rights Ordinance itself lays out a lot of these specifics, and these are actually, almost all of this wording comes directly from the ordinance itself, and is just an easy way to go through and to apply the ordinance and kind of answers some of the questions that weren't addressed in the ordinance. For instance, the hearing officer shall be the city attorney or their designee unless there is good cause. I would note that in the, the rules, we use, we specifically used there. As you may be aware, the Merriam dictionary recently came out and took the position that there is a gender neutral plural and singular. So instead of using his or her, we have moved to there. I'm not sure if there was any specific questions as to how this would apply, but I would be happy to address those. happy to address those.
Um, and it's, it's my understanding, unless the process has changed, it's my understanding that complaints, uh, will still go through HRCS, and, uh, that's Human Relations Community Service. And, um, they will make sure that the appropriate information is, um, provided, and then it will be, um, turned over to the city attorney's office. Is that correct?
That, uh, that is basically correct. Um, the human, uh, HRCS department is the department that has been charged with this ordinance. Upon receipt of the complaint, and this should be, these, um, complaints should be in writing, um, within 45 days, the department needs to contact the claimant to discuss their concerns and schedule informal conference. They need to commence and complete the complaint investigation within 90 days unless there is good cause for an extension. Um, there, you can see in six and seven, there's some of the steps that take part of that, um, investigation. Then if the department head or their designee determines that the complaint and preliminary evidence gathered indicates a violation, they shall notify city council, who shall designate a hearing officer to conduct a hearing within 90 days after the completion of the investigation. So it's actually going to come to city council before it comes to the office of the city attorney. Um, the hearing officer shall be the city attorney or their designee unless there is good cause. For instance, if the complaint was against the city attorney, they would not be an appropriate hearing officer, nor would, um, potentially their designee, who would typically be someone in the office of the city attorney. Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
And therein lies my question. So if the city council, you're saying they shall notify city council, who shall designate a hearings officer, but then in the next one, you're saying the hearings officer shall be the city attorney. So we're not designating a hearings officer. It's, it's already been determined that the hearings officer will be the city attorney.
Unless there's a conflict of interest. So the city, uh, council is going to be vetting where there is a, um, when the, for example, if it is the city attorney, that's a clear conflict of interest. But there could be a more subtle conflict of interest, um, and that would bring us to 10 in the event there's a conflict of interest or other good cause.
I'm still on number eight. So that still doesn't really make any sense to me. You're, you're, you know, it says, they shall notify the city council, who shall designate a hearings officer. It doesn't say, shall designate the city attorney unless there's a conflict of interest. It says, black and white, we shall designate a hearings officer. So either we are designating the hearings officer, or the hearings officer shall be the city attorney unless there's a conflict of interest. It can't be both.
Um, I would respectfully disagree. That's what I, I could, if it would make you more comfortable, we could make eight, nine, and 10, instead of having those separated. Um, I like to put sentences separated for style choice. Um, but I think it's pretty clear that city council shall designate, if there's other good cause, um, they can designate, um, an attorney from the approved council list.
Just a second.
Okay.
Are you done, Councilmember Spitzley? Are you contemplating?
No, I'm just confused. No contemplation here.
Okay. Um, I have Councilmember, uh, Washington, then Councilmember Hussein.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleague Spitzley.
Help me out.
I don't think that you can just take eight by itself. It has to be eight, nine, and 10. And she merely separated those for clarification purposes. Because if she took out the nine and 10, it would say, and the hearing officer will be the city attorney or their designee unless. I, I get what she did, it's for clarification purposes, but they really are all, um, combined.
I trust you guys. Uh, Councilmember Hussein, you're good. Vice President Spatafor.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that the ordinance that this body adopted, I won't say we, because I wasn't here at the time, um, does say that OCA shall develop the rules. And that's, I think we're just approving, okay, got it.
Yep, I'm good. Just asking question.
They, they do develop them, but they come before council, and if there's an issue with the rules, then we can send them back to the city attorney for clarification.
Yes, no, I hear that. I'm just.
All right. Uh, Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. So when we're taking, looking at eight, nine, and 10, basically, good cause and conflict of interest, those kind of caught my attention. So I'm thinking there's times where anything that deals with police, um, it would be hard for the city attorney's office, who are intimately connected with the police department in many ways, including defending them civilly, um, prosecuting their ordinance violations, and defending them in federal court for basically, um, civil rights violations. So that just piques my, my interest. And then when it goes to, um, an attorney on the, the list, unfortunately, so those are like Foster Swift, huge firms all over the place in country, but then they're still like appointed by the city of Lansing. So I think they would have an interest to find for city business or officers or anything like that. So those are just my concerns, but I'm sure since city council has it first, it looks like, where we can appoint anybody, including anybody probably on this, uh, dais today, um, hopefully that we take these and do something with it and get it figured out the best we can. Except I also realize that only a few, if none, has actually used this ordinance yet, but that should not take from our ability to like go after it and vet it and be 100% with it.
Thank you. Heather.
Yeah, I would say in addressing, um, Councilmember Jackson, I think the issue with police, if this was a case that was clearly going into litigation, perhaps that would in fact be good cause for the city attorney not to be the hearing officer, um, and perhaps an outside counsel. And as you are probably aware, city coun, for an attorney to be placed on the approved council list, it is city council who approves those attorneys. Then as you kind of move forward, you see these are the guidelines for conducting the hearing. And then the claimant and respondent shall have the right to appeal the hearing officer's findings and recommendations in writing within 30 days to the president of city council. Um, so this is similar to the FOIA where it comes to city council. I would note that we did not specify in these rules if there is a conflict of interest with the city council president. However, we have thoroughly analyzed that issue, and if there were a conflict of interest or other good cause for the city council president not to hear the appeal, the recommendation would be that city council sets by resolution who that person should be. Um, we kind of started, I was trying to think of just setting someone to be that person, but then you kind of start going down the rabbit hole of hypotheticals. It seems very possible that if the president of city council is conflicted, um, because I was originally going to go to the vice president, it seems that potentially all members of council could be conflicted depending on what the allegation is. Um, I thought about going to the clerk, but this could be a lard if we've got the city council. And so, um, we thought that it would be best, should we find ourselves in that situation, to have city council by resolution designate the appeals, um, who the appeal would go to. Hopefully, it wouldn't come up so much that that would be burdensome, it would just be, um, how to handle that. Um, and then you can see, um, number 17, this is as provided by the ordinance. These are the recommended remedial actions that can be, um, put forward. Um, there's some more deadlines, you can see laid out in 18. And then there's some more, um, requirements by the department, um, providing notice. And then, of course, anyone would still have the ability to avail themselves of other, um, options, such as going to the Michigan Department of Civil Rights, um, or another analogous agency, depending on what the allegations are. Um, or of course, they couldn't always just bring a lawsuit.
Uh, Councilmember Jackson.
I guess I could wait till the end, or are we?
I think that, I, I didn't have anything else.
So I guess with this, and this is kind of for legal, if somebody does not go through all these steps, would they have not exhausted all legal remedies or appeal? And then maybe be barred from some type of pros, um, some type of suit or recovery in the future? Because if that could be construed that way, I would be a little concerned because I think it would limit people's access to legal remedies. Not saying I want everybody to sue the city, and I know you work hard already, but, um, has anybody thought about that, or?
Council, Councilmember Jackson, I, I think, um, the way the ordinance was created, this was a vehicle for someone to go through. If they chose not to go through this or started this process and decided to enter into a lawsuit, that's, that's entirely up to them. They can stop the process at any time.
President Wood, I seem to recall that discussion as well, that this is, these can be parallel courses.
Yes.
So you, you can still, you know, pursue your remedies that way, but this is also a remedy that you could pursue, and you don't have to, one is not exclude you from doing the other, I seem to recall.
I would also, um, when you look at 21, the language that is required to be, um, provided, I think when, once the city takes the position that nothing in this chapter shall be construed to limit rights granted under the laws of the state of Michigan or the United States, I think it's going to be pretty difficult for the city of Lansing to go in and argue that, oh, you didn't go through the full administrative appeals process. For instance, the way that we've been able to go to the circuit court and argue that the marijuana licensing needs to go through the full administrative appeals before going to the, um, circuit court, I really see this as pretty different, especially when we're providing this language to people to give them that comfort.
Uh, Mr. City Attorney.
I recognize Councilmember Jackson's concern, being a lawyer who are hitting it. And I think, so you've got discrimination laws in federal civil rights, state civil rights, there's many different, many different agencies and causes of action for civil rights. This is a local ordinance with, uh, another remedy. It may be a concern if someone tries to sue just on the ordinance itself and not under, you know, section 1983 or some other law like that, that is just like the marijuana, that if you try to leapfrog on this ordinance to a circuit court, circuit court will probably say exhaust your administrative remedies first under this ordinance. Doesn't preclude that person from going under, you know, the state's civil rights, Elliot Larson, or under the Federal Civil Rights Act and going with a direct lawsuit. So I think it would only apply to try to leapfrog in this ordinance to circuit court without going through the administrative remedies.
Are there other questions? Okay, I'm going to throw a bombshell out here, um, to the administration. I want to know how serious you are about the Human Rights Ordinance. And the reason I ask that is because, again, I went to look up something for, uh, a constituent, and it happened to do with the Human Rights Ordinance. It is not on the HRCS page. There is not the form to fill out that information on there. All there is, is a PDF flyer showing, which is not the flyer that was created by the ad hoc committee, um, that put that forward, but just a purple flyer talking about human rights things. And, you know, we can propagate as many rules as we want, we can, uh, you know, change the ordinance 15 times, but if we're not putting a mechanism out there where people understand that there is absolutely a place to find this, and that, um, and, and how to fill this out and how to move forward with this, then it's not worth the paper it's blown up on. And so it, this has been an issue since we had the ad hoc committee. Yeah, um, Jim, you know, we had this discussion, Patricia knows we had it, you, when you were on the committee, you know, we had it. Um, Brian, you were on the committee for a while, you know that we had this with the ad hoc committee. The issue is, is getting the information out there so people understand that they have rights out there and that we are concerned about this. Because my next question would be, how many have filed a complaint? Well, we went through this before, and we found out that there were only three people that had filed a complaint. Two of them, um, were, um, who's the gentleman that came down to council, um, all the time, who passed away? Um, John Pollard. John Pollard filled out two of them as trying to see how it worked, and Todd Haywood filled out one. And, and that was it. So, you know, we've got to do a better job if we're serious about having a Human Rights Ordinance. It makes us feel good to be able to say those things. We've got this, we think that this is important out there, but if we're not doing, we're, we're not making this available for the public in a way that they understand that it's available, then, then I don't know why we'd go through this.
We're obviously very serious about it. I don't know what, there was a lot there, I'm not sure what the exact question was. I see, you know, when you go to the HRCS page, there is a, um, a PDF there. I know you just met with the mayor a couple of hours ago, and this didn't come up, so we're happy to discuss it, we're happy to talk about different ways to promote the ordinance, different ways to get the information out there. So we are always more than happy to have that conversation, we're very serious about it. And I'm happy to have that, this is the first time we've ever heard any complaints about it not being available, which it is. Is it ideal? Is the PDF great? It's not, we can redo it, we can happily do that, I'm happy to have that conversation in a productive way.
If, if we're directing people, and, and this administration's been good about directing people to the website and downloading applications and downloading information, to not have this there, eh, you know, and, and I will tell you, this goes back, this doesn't necessarily, you know, fall on, all on your lap, but this goes, um, back to our IT director, who we had into the ad hoc committee, and we pointed out the stuff wasn't on there, and he'd assured us that he was going to get it put up on there. And if it weren't for the fact, um, that I had to look this up for someone, I wouldn't have been aware of that, um, today, that we were still, we still didn't have it. So, you know, part of it was between the meeting that we had, um, with the mayor just a little bit, uh, ago, and this meeting was when I came upon the fact that here we are, this was on our agenda, and here we are, and we're still not, we don't have it up there.
So when you say we don't have it up there, you're talking about a form, so if someone comes, there's some sort of online forum that they can put it in, submit it, and, and it can be interactive?
It can, you can have that, you can have a PDF that they can pull down, but all that's on there, if you look at that, that page, is that purple card that talks about, yes, Human Rights Ordinance. That's all it, it does. And it's, it doesn't, it doesn't say anything. Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I have full faith you'll get it up there. I would like to see the flyer, uh, the one that the ad hoc committee actually put together that explains the whole thing, and the form that people can fill out. Because, um, I know some of our colleagues were involved with the, um, Human Rights Ordinance that happened like over a decade ago. And then we did, um, uh, President Wood did put together an ad hoc committee, and we worked really, really hard. And the sticking point was, people had no idea how to file a claim. So I think it's probably a really easy fix, and, and I, and I'm sure you all want it. I, I can see how it would, you know, kind of fall through the cracks.
And I haven't seen the flyer that the ad hoc committee put together, so I would love if someone would send that to me, I would love to see that.
We, we have it on our, is it on ours?
It's on the council page.
On our flyers, website.
And, and it, it really explains well what the ordinance is, what the steps are, and then, um, if the form could be, uh, right there with it. Because I can't believe that people, that we don't have anybody out there that has either not been discriminated against or believes they have been discriminated against. And I think we want that access to be there for folks, because we really do want to be an inclusive community and make sure nobody's being mistreated.
Councilmember Spitzley, and then Vice President Spatafor.
If you want to go first.
I was just, um, thank you, Madam President. I just, um, it brought to mind. I just, um, it brought to mind, you know, we had representatives of the mayor's office come to the ad hoc committee. And looked at the form. And so, um...
Was that his name?
Yes. Yes. Marilyn Plummer came to our meetings. So, um, I, yeah, I think it's just, um, it's, it's just a function of putting a link. I'd like to have a, if we can, we, a link to the complaint document, and then, you know, a discussion of the steps of how a person goes about, you know, formulating a complaint, you know, and, and what, kind of a what, what's next type of thing. So, um, yeah, if we can just get a link up there to the, to the complaint form and, and other documents, that would be great.
Vice President Spatafor.
No, thank you. I'm glad we're having this conversation, and I'm glad that OCA put so much time into these rules. How long have you been developing them?
The mic, please.
The rules?
Yeah.
Um, I was given the assignment in October, and it completed.
Okay, so, yeah, so it's been rather recently. So I'm hoping this will be a chance to spur the conversation, because I did have someone come to me with a human rights ordinance violation, what we perceived to be one. And, um, I'm not trying to hold anyone over here, I'm just, my point is, it took me rounds and rounds of emails with that department director to even figure out what was supposed to happen. And I'm pretty good at reading law and code, and even I was a little confused about it. So I'm very pleased that you all have put this in as easy terms as, as lawyers are able to do, um, a process that's explainable, and hopefully this will be able, it's an opportunity for us to have a conversation with city employees and folks, even those of us around the table, because I didn't know for sure. And I will be taking this back to the person who called me and saying, here's what's supposed to happen. And if it doesn't, keep me informed. But I really, uh, I think this is a good opportunity for us to not only have the, the law on the books, but now have a, a solid way to show how it will, will function.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Oh, I, I, I agree. I don't have anything to say. I agree. Thank you.
Um, and, and I think, hopefully, um, I know when the city attorney, when we brought this back and we, um, did talk to the administration, as we were finishing this up, Samantha, we did, um, get clarification that these would go through HRCS as the center point, um, because we had some difficulty with how that was going to happen, and, and you did get that straightened out for us, and we appreciate that. But, um, you know, I think part of this, and I would encourage that, um, part of training for new employees, as well as, um, a reminder to, um, current employees, is that we do have this out there. Because I remember, um, there was a case that was brought to us during the ad hoc committee where, um, and it wasn't your administration, it was another administration. And, um, there was a person that had a complaint, and, um, no one that, not the police department, not the mayor's office, not the city attorney's office, um, the person they talked to in the city attorney's office, knew about the human rights ordinance, sent them to, um, the state and the prosecutor, and, um, was not aware. And the person who, um, brought this to our attention, his wife was working in the legislature, um, and the person had gone there, and she said, "Well, my husband's working on that, so I know the city has one." And, uh, you know, I think part of this whole thing is making sure that everyone is aware that we do have something out there that it's usable. Okay, any other comments? Yes, Vice President Spatafor.
To your point, I just don't know. I mean, I'm glad that we have a place for this to go, and like I said, I'm optimistic this will start the conversation. But I put this in front of HRCS, and even HRCS wasn't sure what was supposed to happen. And that really concerns me.
It, it concerns me.
And that's not, that's not a function of a new administration. That is a historical problem to me, and that needs to be talked about, but maybe not tonight, because I got Jack Ryan, season two, to catch up on. But, um, I do think that it's a conversation that needs to be had.
Count, councilmember Spitzley, I was waiting for you to go there. You know, or why I called you before.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, you know, so we, we, we put together this, um, this document. And, you know, I, I recall, and, and justifiably so, the city attorney came to us and said, "We need to do some revisions to this ordinance, because we can't have the, the city attorney basically reviewing the applications and then being the hearings officer." It was, and so, you know, we needed to have that separation. And so we went through this whole thing. We went through this whole thing with the administration. We went through the whole thing with the city attorney to make sure that we had a process in place by which, um, you know, a person would, uh, submit their, um, complaint to HRCS, have them initially review it, and then provide it, you know, make a determination. So, you know, this is, this is, this has been a discussion that we've had, and we, I thought we had a pretty complete discussion.
Yeah, I did too.
About, um, who was supposed to do what. And so it's troubling to me, um, and I, and I, I'm not, I'm not casting any blame on anybody, but it's troubling to me that we're still having people who would like to avail themselves of this because they've been in an unfortunate situation, and they still don't know where to go, who to go to, or what the process is. I am not a person that likes to put forth ordinances, and I don't think anybody up here on the dais is, so, but I'm speaking me personally. Put forth an ordinance that is not enforceable. That, that is, to me, that's not good government, and it's, it's, and it does a disservice to our residents. And so, you know, we really need to figure this out. And again, it's probably not something for us to decide today, um, but I really think that we need to make sure that, um, our residents, if they have an issue, and they come to a city council person, or they go to our website, they know, you know, that, they know where they can go, they know who's going to review it, and they, they have some certainty of what's going to happen. And I'm not hearing that certainty, and I think we weren't hearing that certainty before, which is why we started the whole discussion and the review. So I, I remember that. And it's, so it's frustrating to me, and, and I know it's frustrating to you, President Wood, because you've been working on it a lot longer. And so I, I, I'm confident that we will be able to work with the mayor's office to make sure that, you know, this will be resolved. Thank you.
Vice President Spatafor.
Well, I guess that's my point. I don't mean to sound like I'm flying off the handle on this at HRCS, but I appreciate that Ms. Sumner's put a lot of work into this. There is now a process, been identified rules that make sense and a little tangible, brings it to the forefront. I just, I got frustrated with that process, because I'm someone who has the direct dial number of everybody in city hall, um, agency to make things happen, and I got frustrated and confused by that process. So it's nice to see the work OCA put into this to clarify, and hopefully it will elevate it to the front, forefront. I hope we don't have a lot more of complaints, but I think with a process that is clearer to people, we probably will, because I know that we do not live in utopia. Unless you're in the first ward, I get it.
Okay. Um, next on our agenda is a resolution, uh, for a city council meeting schedule. If everyone would take a look at that, and at our next meeting on November eighteenth, uh, we will have that on the agenda. So if there are dates or things that you see as, um, potential conflicts or that, um, we can discuss it at that time. Councilmember Washington.
I don't have children in school, but, and I don't know when spring break is, but that has been an issue in the past. So whoever has kids in school, make sure we're not having one during spring break.
Okay. Remember, that particular time is normally budget time that we're talking about, so those are, um, budget meetings. Yes, councilmember?
As a school teacher, I can tell you that the, none of these dates fall on any of the spring breaks, um, for the Lansing area.
All right, thank you.
He's counting down already.
Okay. All right. So, uh, with that, I don't believe we have anything else. So we are adjourned.